Mr. Bruni, here. Mr. Bruni, here. Ms. McIntyre. Mrs. Westner. Ms. Minnie. Here. Mayor Walcott, here. Mr. Shukura.
Maybe you'll like some of that.
I'm, uh, I'm Officer 415, Senator Ashburn. I want to discuss the no parking, the parking issue on North Fork Street. And the building of the garages. There was no parking there. They rescinded no parking. Just we were able to put up two garages. And now we can't park there yet. Is it okay for us to park on the opposite side of the street?
Do you have a question up for the, uh, Chief Sheriff?
I think we already discussed that because of the way that other side of the street is, I think you'd have an issue with the dip there. You know, you'd be blocking partially that lane there.
You're blocking sand on both sides.
I mean, if you're, if, if there's access in and out of the garage and you're not blocking-
I mean, it's not that much of a dip.
Right. I mean, as long as you're not blocking it to the point where he can't get out of the garage, we don't see any issue with it.
But why can't he bring the car, his-
That's something you need to address with the code people, that's not something that we just issue, you know, tickets for garages and driveways.
That street has residential parking.
Right. That's, we don't designate residential parking, we just enforce the laws, that's all we do.
This is an ongoing situation which has started with, uh, which you were aware of.
Right.
And-
Twenty-fourth of the-
Which you're just addressing on Monday, we really didn't get a chance to get the committee together to take care of that, to look into what we have to do.
Right, so you need the sidewalk there, the sidewalk's missing?
So, we have that listed down to have a meeting on that and take care, look into what we need to do.
Okay.
You are on the, you did write it down when I addressed that.
But we still can't park on that side of the street at all.
If you can park in a dip and there's an access for a vehicle to come through, but you're not blocking the flow of traffic, like Moe said-
What about his garages?
Well, he should be able to back up. I don't know.
Why, his garages are facing North Fork Street. They should be facing Chestnut Street.
We were told last time, when we heard counsel a few months ago, they were not going to face North Fork Street. And now they are.
That's the issue.
The whole, the whole atmosphere turned into a chaos for us. It should have been that he should have came from the alley, which is Chestnut.
Chestnut, right.
Into there, as far as what he did there. The zoning, the zoning board and the School of County Courthouse gave him that permit, right Barb?
Yes. But when the permit was given, was, did zoning come up to get on the area to see where he was going to put the garages or not? That didn't happen?
We have you down, let us work on that this, this month, and we will have an answer for you next month.
Well, the issue here is he still has to put that sidewalk back in.
That's a definite.
Okay, and when he puts that sidewalk in, he's gonna have to come in with plans and everything and what he's going to do, or we're not gonna allow the pizza.
One of the issues, when, when the parking was banned there, it's, it's historic streets, it's the only used cobblestone street still in use in Schoolville County. And I have photographs here, there was, there were cut stone curves, they all went for demolition. They ran the whole lanes of the street. That was part of the original cobblestone street.
Yes, and they dug them out.
They run for demolition, they're gone, and that's cut stone, that's not tree, that's not concrete.
I know, they're, they're three foot, they're three foot high. And they actually, when they go down, they're six inches, they offset, they're, they're monsters.
And all went for demolition.
They're all curbs, stones, cements.
And that was part of the original cobblestone street, when the cobblestone street was created.
Front to the back.
And that was one of the issues, they goes, we couldn't drive, we couldn't park there because it was a historic street.
Let us look into it, our solicitor will look into it, we'll see what we can come up with.
Um, if he's gonna ramp that sidewalk down to the cobblestone, how would you, you'd connect that without damaging the cobblestone?
Well, he has to put a, first of all, he's in trouble because he took the curb out, he's got to put a curb in before he can even do the payment. So he has to, he has to put a separate curb in. I think by code, he has to put a separate curb in then payment, so he's got a problem.
You don't have that for the keeper.
Okay, thank you.
He's not, he's not even doing that because he's starting to put, uh, ramp.
He's gonna ramp that, that-
Well, he's got the sidewalk.
Yeah. Albert, how, how is he, how is he gonna protect the cobblestone without destroying the cobblestone?
Albert, when he went to the zoning board, uh-
For the barriers?
Yeah, for the barriers, was he talking about putting sheds up or garage, he said sheds, and he told them sheds, and, and of course, asked them if they were garages, he said no, I'm putting two sheds up, and he gave him an answer there.
That's what we thought too, that was sheds and not a garage.
Right.
I'm also wondering if it's on record that he asked for permission to have them face Chestnut, or-
That's fine if they're sheds.
Right.
But if they're garages- Right now he's-
There's plenty of sheds in garages or they're not, they're not garages.
What was on the permit, the garages?
From Schoolville County, how to rewrite that.
Oh, there's garages on there.
Yep. And then it was garages.
But at the barriers, he said you put the sheds.
We'll have to wait a few minutes and then-
So why would he have to get a, he had to get a variance to make that possible? We, we will look into that, we have it down to work on that, uh. We'll see where we can go with that. If you can park on the opposite side, that you're obstructing. If you're not obstructing the, the-
Right.
Throughway there.
Right.
That's his problem backing out that car, yes, no?
He's not using it.
There ain't any use.
They're not finished yet.
You can't get any either, it's all ramped on its own.
But we can't park on that side of the street. He has from the front all the way to the back, no parking. Because he, he has cars, three cars backed by the shed that he has in the back.
I seen that, looked at that today.
So, Mark.
Casey, turn this one street.
Yes ma'am.
So you will not be ticketing if they park on the opposite side of the street as long as they're-
As long as there's ample room for people to get through that street, we don't see a problem.
So at least that's a solution for now.
That's correct.
Thank you.
He prepared a proposal.
Well.
For me?
For me.
Oh. Well, he violated, he violated it right off the bat, so. We'll do what we need to do. The reason we blocked that street when the fire was, God bless Mr. Bruni, the fire was there to, to commotion, so. We put them signs up and not just open the door up for him. We never put them signs up, I don't think that, I don't know. I don't, he tore the building down, okay, I'm gonna pull vehicles in there.
But, so he, he bypassed Ashburn Borough and went right to Foxville to get the permit, to put some buildings on.
No, he had to go, go down the four hours, the barriers.
He had to, yeah, right.
He had to get a variance for him to be able to do that. And they're not permanent structures.
No.
They're sitting on top of this ground.
Right, sitting on the stone.
So they're called a shed, but they're a garage.
Hey, he didn't pour a footer or nothing like that?
No, no. No, they're just sitting on-
All right.
They're sitting on six feet six.
But the answer was, yes, he had to go to the Schoolville County zoning because we do not do our zoning here in Borough. And what, when we were there and he presented this, the one man kept saying, "Why aren't you here? Why aren't you here? There's, you don't have to be here."
Yeah, they expected him to go through, uh, the Foxville Borough.
He said, "You don't have to be here."
Well, he still applied for the variance and he got it.
He gives him the code group, like, they do.
Okay.
I used to, you know, we were told they weren't gonna face Fork Street, now they are.
All right. We're gonna look into that.
The whole street was residential parking, now it's a driveway.
I mean, I've been there thirty-two years.
Yes.
Yeah.
We know that, it's not fair.
And never had a problem with anybody. There was, there was never a fence in the yard.
Right.
Joe and Helen had a dog, we had a dog, it was our problem.
Right.
Well, see, that's why we took the sign down because he tore, tore a curb in the payment out.
Yeah.
So he still went straight ahead.
But he has the whole side street.
Yeah, we'll look into that, let us get some answers and we'll see what we can come up with for next month.
We have any other public comment?
The fire that was at Thirteenth Street, I was just wondering is when, when somebody's gonna like secure that building? Somebody what? Is gonna secure it?
Twelfth and Arch.
Yes.
Twelve was period on point, but Phillip just told me that somebody opened up the side door, took the plywood off, so I need to be in touch with her.
Okay, because nothing, nothing upstairs was ever secured.
Well, what was done was okay for what, for now.
Side door.
But the side door now is open, so-
Well, not only that, with the plywood that was over the front two windows is just sitting there now, like it's all open on both sides of it, and, I mean, everything's just hanging.
Well, we'll make sure, I'll make sure that I see her.
Somebody's gonna get hers.
Yeah, somebody must have tried to get in.
I don't know.
In the place. There's kids going in and out, Barbara. Yeah, there's one. There's children going in and out, kids. Yeah, Phillip just made me aware before, so I'll be seeing her tomorrow.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Uh, my neighbor's water is still froze, the two of them, she's staying down there. That's up this morning when I talked to them.
Now, did you find out, is that under support?
I don't know.
Because like again, it's before the stop.
I just wanted to let you know.
Right, right. It's, but, it's the homeowner or the landlord, whichever is the problem.
Well, before it was obviously the girls because of where it was, so I don't know where it's at now.
Well, then maybe it is.
But it's like five, six days that they don't?
Well, if it is between the stop and the main, they'd have to follow up with Borough, with one of the workers, but Ray, do you know at that residence where it's located?
The last-
No, there was a problem with the stop, as I said on Monday night. Back when we had the last deep freeze, it was two or three years ago. We dug the whole thing up and replaced everything. So my thoughts are that it's not the stop, the stop should be well deep enough.
I know they had a plot this afternoon.
And they were fun, had with you, right?
They called me on Saturday morning. And I said, "Sam, okay." Asked that, I don't- Know if they contacted us ever again?
Well, Rick had it on Facebook, asking for a recommendation of the people for some time. Somebody that could come and help them, yeah.
Is that a eleven-thirty Pine?
Yeah, and Bernie's house.
Okay, all right.
And I've never known Bernie to freeze.
Any other public comment?
Now, President, I have a question for this listener, going back to Mr. and Mrs. Sawyer's problem. I was never around a zoning board area or garage. Do they take, do they have a court stenographer that takes notes? Or do they have electronic or they take notes?
Usually if they have a court stenographer.
Would it be possible to get a copy of the court stenographer's documents from the testimony that was given at the variance?
Sure.
That way we know what we're looking into on behalf of these residents.
Would it be possible to have the road rebound and mark the yellow line on the right side there, if folks in the curve, where, where, how far you can park? Do you not, you know, violate, you know, violate the young department? There is one on the left side, because we hope to find them, if we're okay to put marks there, on the right side. Oh, who's there?
I don't know, but I know we did.
But they're measured, they're measured, I've measured that myself, having a problem with that. But if somebody don't measure the right side? So, so it's legal parking. On the, on the center street, that.
Can I ask you how many cars park on that side street that you're talking about? Two, is it one, is it five?
They all have the six. We have, we have four vehicles altogether. And, and out of the four, one isn't a carport, so we have three people.
And is there not parking, like, in front of your house, like on Center Street? Is there parking on Center Street?
Yeah, there's parking.
There is? Okay.
How much the bars have them on the, on the street?
It's just, it's a, it's a more of an issue in winter time. Because off-street parking, off-center street parking in the winter is prime in this town.
Well, with the apartments across the street, you know, they all have cars, so.
And if there's an emergency, we gotta go hunt parking places. And we used to have, always have them on the side, in, in, on the side street. And you could fix, fix, just have the vehicles on that side street whenever, when it was just a building there. We have three to put in there, that's what we have.
Okay, do we have any other public comments? Okay, let's go on to the approval of the minutes, we all received the minutes on Monday night, kind of a motion to accept the minutes.
Back to the motion.
First to the second on the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We all received the officer reports, a chance for you to go round, and a motion to accept the officer reports.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'm checking out.
On the question? All those in favor? And opposed? Motion carries. Allow the bills and transfer. General Government Committee, Mr. Spielus.
Approved.
Public Safety Committee, approved. Utility Committee, Mr. Spielus.
Approved.
Street Committee, Mr. Bruni.
Approved.
Recreation Committee, Mrs. Westner, approved. Health Committee, Ms. McIntyre, approved. Building Committee, Mr. Bruni.
Approved.
Insurance Committee, Mr. Minnie.
Approved.
Motion to pay the bills.
Make that motion.
I'll second. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number business. Proposal for two thousand seventeen chapter ninety-four report.
I'm a proposal from NTEC Engineering for the two thousand seventeen chapter ninety-four report. And the sum of twenty-eight hundred dollars.
Make the motion to accept it.
I have a motion to accept by Mr. Bruni, recommended by Mr. Minnie. On the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution. Two thousand eighteen dash one dash one, Schoolville County Emergency Operations Basic Plan.
Whereas titles thirty-five of the Pennsylvania RSTW services code mandates Ashburn Borough have an emergency operation plan for the prevention and minimization of injury and damage caused by major emergencies and disasters within the borough. Whereas in response to the mandate of, the county of Schoolville has prepared an update to the basic emergency management plan to provide prompt and effective emergency response procedures to be followed in the event of a major emergency or disaster. Whereas, this emergency operation plan prescribes those activities to be taken by the borough in order to reduce the potential effects of a major emergency or disaster to protect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens in the event of a natural or human-caused disaster. And also to satisfy the requirements of the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Code. Therefore, the Borough Council of Ashburn hereby has topped and placed into immediate effect a basic emergency operations plan of the county of Schoolville.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. Motion by Mr. Spielus, seconded by Ms. McIntyre. On the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Three, resolution two thousand eighteen dash one dash two, inter-fund balances.
Resolution of the Borough of Ashburn, approving the elimination of inter-fund balances via resolve of the council of the Borough of Ashburn hereby resolved with the same authority. Whereas the Borough Council, having met this tenth day of January two thousand eighteen, a public session, has decided to that the inter-fund assets and liabilities on various funds of the borough will never be repaid. Whereas the Borough Council of Ashburn, which is not going to misrepresent the financial status of the various funds, now therefore via resolve that the council has decided to eliminate these balances through the income statement accounts through December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make a motion. I second it. There's a motion by Ms. McIntyre, seconded by Mrs. Wester on the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, bid opening for sale of American LaFrance ladder truck. We have a bid.
We have one?
We have one bid.
I have one bid for twelve hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-six cents. The Schoolville Historical Fire Society, one oh five South Jordan Street.
I, I'd like to make a motion to accept that bid because they're gonna take care of that truck, it'll be on display up there, they have a beautiful setup up there, and I think that'd be nice to keep our truck active.
I'll second that.
All right.
On the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is sold.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you.
These three gentlemen here represent a society.
It will be kept the way you see it.
Very good.
A lot of townspeople are gonna be very pleased.
Right, any craze you have here, we'll make sure we get it.
The old one, the new one.
The old.
That was the old one. All right, moving on to other, Miss Minnie, do you have anything for us?
Nothing, I'm just trying to think, you know.
Mr. Bruni?
Yeah, I would just like to announce that with warmer weather coming, the Bay Grove baseball, Ashburn Bay Grove baseball, we'll be having sign-ups shortly, I don't have all the information, but just wanted to put it in the back of everybody's minds that we're ready for another year of baseball.
And what ages is that for fans?
Basically thirteen or fifteen, uh. Depending on the child, twelve-year-olds, olds can play out, and sixteen-year-olds can't play down.
Oh yeah, I have got the letter today for anybody who's interested, the next cog meeting is January twenty-fourth at the Gordon Borough. January twenty-fourth, seven o'clock, at the Gordon Borough's next cog meeting.
He's our representative for the cog.
Oh, okay.
Any of us can go.
Yeah, I'm just letting, letting you know, it's at Gordon.
January twenty-fourth.
Seven o'clock.
Did you say at the Borough building?
Gordon Municipal Building.
Seven.
That's all I have.
Usually Adam or Ray are both down.
Mr. Bruni?
Uh, the only thing I have was, uh, for you, Mark, I, I got a call about a, a couple abandoned vehicles parked down, uh. Right by the creek down there, uh, going to where it's lawyers, uh, you know where Booker lives there? Uh, where Mrs. Goine used to live, but Booker moved in there?
You're talking about back, backside, where the vehicle places were?
Well, not all the way back, just when you turn back there.
Okay.
Off of fifty-four. Uh, there's supposed to be one or two vehicles down there, sitting there with no tags and, uh, no inspection on it, I mean, if you get a chance, you check it out.
No problem.
All right.
I do not, um, I'd just like to introduce myself, my name is Ashley Secur, I'm obviously from Williamson, Freeburg and Jones. Um, I have some prior municipal law experience, I've represented various townships, boroughs, sewer authorities. Um, I'm just thankful for this opportunity, thank you guys.
You're gonna be here permanently now?
I am.
Don't dare walk behind the other one. The other one was something else to desire. What's your name?
Ashley Secur.
Mr. Spielus?
I would like to welcome all our new members, and I hope we have a good year, that we can all work together and try and solve a problem, which is not an easy issue to solve problems in the Borough of Ashburn. We all have a lot of issues, but it's, a lot of them are hard, we're trying to put programs together, and we have a good team sitting at this table now, we are working on it. And we are working on the Blight, Adam started, Adam, then Marie and I started something last year, so we are on it, it's just taking time for the proper procedures, which take time to go through. The courthouse does not help us a lot in different things of what we're doing. Ray, you're borough workers and you're doing a fine job in the town. Snow was taken care of, streets were taken care of. Mark, that was a very nice report you made for last year, and I know what you go through. Thank you. You're doing a fine job. Barb, and you're doing a fine job also. Even though we get the ifs and ands and everybody has a bar. Phil, God bless you, we love you, man. You are a man, exactly. And there is, well, you can announce, or you're gonna announce for Saturday, right?
Yes.
That's it. Ms. McIntyre? Um, going along with that, we're gonna start meeting the Blight Committee next week, Tuesday at six-thirty, and get the ball rolling, right away here in the New Year. That's it? Mrs. Westner?
Um, the Friday after Thanksgiving, there was a terrible fire up my block at twelve hundred and Arch Street. And there was two gentlemen that happened to see the smoke and took it upon themselves, I don't know if they're the ones that called it in, Phillip, maybe you know that?
They did.
But they went to the house, they kicked the door open, and they rescued the people that were inside. I would like to ask if we could have a resolution next month, recognizing the two individuals that did so. And it is the Hainoskis from Aristocent Centralia, and I will get the address and the proper names, and the letter out and have them there.
They don't even live in town.
Do we need to vote on that, real staff?
I don't think so.
Have a good sidewalk. Mr. Dunn?
Hard to choose.
I'll tell you a couple of things, first of all, congratulations to the new owners of the affectionately named Brutus Truck. I give my age away a little bit, remember in nineteen fifty-nine, living at Seventeen Ten Center, when the truck was brand new? Coming up Center Street, it had a sound all by itself with that big six-cylinder Continental gas engine. But there's a lot of stories to be told with that truck, a lot of, a lot of good history. Coming this, uh, Saturday is Soundly Alarm Day, we have teamed up with the Red Cross to install smoke alarms throughout the borough. Anybody that wants one, please contact the number the Red Cross has put out, or call the Borough Hall. We will start around eight-thirty on Saturday morning and work till done. The headquarters of the operation will be down at the American Hose, you can call us during the day down there, or get ahold of us some way. But we'd like to canvass the town, their goal is to get at least three hundred smoke alarms installed, or more. They have quite a few.
They will install everyone?
We're, we're going through the installation, we have teamed up with them, they're bringing a crew, they're bringing their work trailer, they're bringing the people. We will have people from the fire department to integrate with their people, to show them where to go. We did put door, uh, door hangers out in the last couple of days.
Yeah.
It has gotten a tremendous response. The Red Cross number has been ringing, and what they'll do, they will compile a list and a map. The supervisor from the Red Cross, his name is Matt from Allentown, he will, when he comes on Saturday, he will have a map of the whole town and where the request came from. It's not limited to what we have requests for. To spread the word, we will be out to get them.
Is there a limit per family?
Yeah, put in what's needed.
The Red Cross is gonna install them?
Yes, yes.
Our fire company guys are just showing?
No, we're gonna help them, we have people gonna help them, it's gonna be a joint venture.
Okay.
So we're gonna have a little coffee and donuts at eight-thirty, and then, uh, when it's all said and done, there's a company called, uh. Rock Mountain, Broad Mountain, our friendly Borup guy, he provides lunch- Hawk Mountain, Broad Mountain, our friendly board of guys, he provides lunches. He comes and volunteers his tools and his equipment and he springs for lunch for the guys, so. And then in a couple of months, they will be doing gerardal. This, I think, is the third location in Schuylkill County they get done. And we're not limited to right here in town. I had a request or two from Locust Dale, we will provide them.
Is there any hangers that you need us, I mean, I'm on Market Street, I can do our block?
All the ha, everything is out, all the paraphernalia, their advertising stuff is all out what they gave us. Where you can verbally, get the word out there. The second thing, I'm glad Justin is here, we had this conversation, one tonight, we'll have it again. We have experienced cold weather like we have never experienced before. Well, not never, but not to this magnitude. Of course, when it gets cold, people have to revert to creative ideas how they're gonna heat their homes. Auxiliary heating is okay to use if it is used properly. If it is used to the manufacturer's recommendations. It's no secret, if you watch the newspaper in the last two weeks, how many nasty, nasty fires were around this area. And they're still occurring. Saturday, we were in gerardal, pipes were frozen, they were trying to thaw the pipes out, up goes the house. We were very fortunate here in town to get through this. We were on a call, however, Saturday morning, it was only an oil burner. But while we're at the residence, I made a point to the homeowner. There was a duplex receptacle, which is two bangers, in her living room. On top of that, they put a four-banger adapter and put a plug in every receptacle along with an electric space heater. Now, that's a time bomb waiting to go off. So in an informative way, explain to the person what has to be done there. Real briefly, space heaters, if they're electric, they must be plugged into a circuit by themselves. You treat that the same as you treat your air conditioner in the summer months. Propane heaters, paraseene heaters, they all take care and caution. Keep yourself warm. Do it, but stay safe. Thank you, folks, and we'll see everybody on Saturday.
Phil, how did, uh, did you start that fire alarm? Did you get involved and do that? How did, how did they?
The Red Cross came to us.
The Red Cross came to you.
What a wonderful program.
Thank you.
Mrs. Light, nothing right now. Chief of Horns.
Nothing, thank you. Good call.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, meeting adjourned.
I'll make that motion. Call the common, go ahead.
That extra thing on the water bill, that trash thing, do you think you could consider getting rid of that and only having people pay if they use it?
The what? What was that?
It's the twelve-dollar charges which he's talking about, that we pay four dollars for the trash.
What that program did for us, it stopped piles and mountains of garbage and you get a hopper, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
We're getting a hop, you get two hoppers a year. And that eliminates the buildup, the clutter, like he just said, a garage full of clutter and not what, where a fire goes and it's alongside of a house? And no, that's a good program.
Well, apparently, a lot of people don't think it is.
And it helps pay not just that, it helps pay other bills that we're operating the borough in. There's more? Believe me, I'm only on here two years and I never, ever in my life dreamed of what it takes to run a borough. I knew what it took to run a hospital, being a president of the union out there, but the whole borough makes the circle. All, all, each benefit and, and the accounts make that whole circle complete.
So you're kind, so you're kind of saying that you use that twelve dollars all in cash? That's the way you're claiming it to me?
That their garbage eliminated, eliminated the chaos in the town, really. I thought that was a wonderful program.
Well, I think it's a good idea for the dumpsters, but why should I pay for it if I'm not using it as my question? If somebody's going to call for it and use it, then yes, bill them.
Okay, let me try to help you out.
You know what I'm saying?
The first time we did that event, we had like thirty-seven, uh, big dumpsters and we never expected that magnitude, so the amount of money that was spent on that, right? Pardon?
They eliminated cleanly because there was too much outside trash coming in.
Right, thank you.
Not just the pickers, the pickers kind of helped us out. Then the people that didn't help us out are the people from other towns, relatives in Ashland and they're bringing stuff in. You see more trash coming in than you ever did.
Well, if you have stuff that could go, what do you do to get it gone?
Call the Borough Hall.
If I got TVs that.
Certain things you can, they can. Electronics was like a problem.
You had two hoppers a year.
And it has to be an owner, not a renter.
There is a place like you set up in, like, I think in a neighborhood right now. I'll see what I can find out, I'll, I'll.
Email forty-two dollars a month.
We'll take a widget, so I think.
See, that was a trouble, they did that, probably you could go on their front and everything out of the garage, well, they brought all the TVs and computers and everything else, 'cause everybody just got stored in the garage.
I just want to clarify something, I think, for Barry, for you. I think what he was trying to say is, this goes back to our workshop meeting, what we saw on Monday, which was quite shocking for all of us. It is the amount of taxes owed for two thousand sixteen to the borough. Sorry, two thousand seventeen.
Five hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. Just for seventeen.
Hold on, I'm getting that, I'm getting that. I think what he was trying to say where the confusion was, the twelve dollars to the forty-eight dollars a year. Of course, that does not go, that goes for garbage, that does not get diserved throughout to pay bills. But I think where he was going with that, you can confirm, what every, how do I word this, every little, not every little bit, but every single pound, any bit of income that we get in the borough here, for whatever reason, helps to do run the borough and to do what we need to do and to take care of it. And I think this forty-eight dollars, twelve dollars quarterly is just something.
Yeah, but not, everybody's paying it, only owners are paying.
The first two years, first year that ran, everybody loved it. Then everybody, okay, your garbage is out, but the cost that it costs us to take care of that.
Well, I think it's a good idea, but I just think that the people that are gonna use it should pay for it, not the people that aren't using it.
It's always there to clear our town clean.
Farry, I've been telling you, I've been taking my trash to my mother's and burning it for the last seven years. I don't even put a garbage bag out. And then I'm getting billed with twelve dollars for my water bill for something else I don't use.
You're, you're the second person, you're the second person that complained about that. You're, you're the only second person.
I've been, I heard a lot of it.
Nobody's paying it.
You know, I'm gonna pay to have our garbage taken away. You're charged again for garbage.
Or I wouldn't have brought it up.
Yeah. I think it's a good thing.
Barry, if I may, recently I was in a conversation on just the other side of the fence. People who don't, who pay for it, deserve, but don't use it. Third, totally they would be actually willing to, if they're not gonna use those hoppers, donate those hoppers to help clean up the town, but still pay their fees. And I think that's an excellent idea. I found it very difficult to find stuff to put out for cleanup. I haven't used a hopper since we've gone into the hopper system.
I haven't either.
And I would be more than willing, then if I'm not gonna use those hoppers to help clean up the neighborhood where I live, I don't think it's a bad idea at all.
I'm personally a lot rich and I'm happy to, you know, I struggle, I know I do struggle to especially people on fixed incomes, but I'm happy to pay the forty-eight dollars a year. It makes our town cleaner, I don't know.
Really, if we have people who are willing to continue to pay this fee whether they use it or not, especially if they're not going to use it and are willing to sign off somehow that we can use these dumpsters to clean up the town, I think the two are looking after it.
A good thought.
Now, nobody wants to pay anything, pay for anything at all. I don't like paying my property taxes, I hate them. But it's a little bit of give back to try and help the town along. Let's face it, all of these small towns are financially strapped. And as Kim McIntyre said, every dollar counts.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to say.
And if everybody belly up to the bar, pay their taxes, pay their bills, you know, somebody's discussing, it would be having a good meeting.
I do feel though, that I think it would be, it would help the low income, if you could pay your taxes and payments like you can your Schuylkill taxes. And I approached one of the commissioners and I still haven't got an answer on that, why they can't do that.
Well, everybody strings about the taxes, but how many people actually think go to a school board meeting and string with those people when they raise the taxes?
That's what I'm saying.
School districts are greater district taxes than the borough.
But you can pay them in payments, Frank.
Exactly.
You can pay two payments, one payment or three. If you could do that in, with the other taxes, I think it would help grandma that only gets paid once a month, she's living on seven hundred dollars a month, and she could pay, she could pay three payments. Maybe her name would get in the paper.
Killed you though, Farry, are people who can afford, who can afford to do that.
Right, exactly.
And pay their taxes, but they let the taxes go the first year, the second year, and it's paid the third year, so they don't end up at Sheriff's.
Right.
And that's where you're ending up with a hundred sixty-six thousand dollars worth, where the bill's going down in the county.
But I'm saying, can't we look into it? I mean, I, I approached the commissioner, I don't know if anyone else has. I still have not got an answer on that question. They didn't know what was their resolution, they didn't know how to go about it. I said, well, how did the school go about it? Maybe you won't have six full pages of delinquents if you're able to make the payment.
Can I make a suggestion on that? Why can't we send them registered letters and threaten to take them to the magistrate?
Who to the magistrate?
The people that don't have their taxes paid that are three years behind.
Well, their name's in the paper.
I'd kind of wait the county issue. But whoever did pay for it, say two thousand seventeen, after, I guess it's January thirty, uh, December thirty-first, they're not paid by then, they go down to the county, it's on our hands. It's like this is a three-year rule, you pay one on a three, property stake.
Well, why can't we look into doing that?
You can go out there individually and make a hand, sort of thing.
The borough, the borough alone, just on, just on the borough, is a hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars for twenty seventeen. Now, they owes twenty sixteen and they owes twenty fifteen. So we're like, one, two, three, we're half a million dollars that we don't have to run our borough. And then everybody's wondering why we ain't doing this and why we ain't doing that and how tight things are. But those problems arise, everybody runs into problems. There is, you can't help them, some of them, but there's no simple issue. When we bring them up to the county down there, they, I don't know, maybe if we press it a little bit more, but that's a good idea. Break in payments.
That's why we're here, to try to find solutions.
You know, just like your car insurance, if you take the hit for six months, it's eight hundred dollars or a thousand dollars for the six months and now you're scrambling. But when you get it out every month, that's a hundred dollars a month, it goes away. So that's a good idea, that has to be brought up.
I think we should look into that for sure.
We will look into that.
I'd like that.
Yes. And that, and what can it be broke up? Any other comments? Any other public comments? We get out of here.
Well, I'd like to thank the, yeah, council for accepting our bid on the, on the fire part. I talked to a young adult and that would have been criminal to have that thing put in the scrapyard around, cutting trees up or something else. And as I look around this beautiful museum that you have, I can appreciate that you people actually are involved in the preservation of history, 'cause I was a veteran miner myself, I'm impressed with this place very much. At that point, we just want to invite everybody, anytime you're going through Shenandoah, one oh five South Jordan Street, come and see what we have. It's, it's an old firehouse, the first one that was built in Shenandoah in eighteen fifty-four was the Columbia, the center of the community, and we have a lot to offer history-wise. And again, I want to thank you for accepting your bid.
We're proud that you're getting.
Thank you, thank you.
This leads home, we have to community watch, our next meeting is February thirteenth at seven o'clock down in Good Shepherd Church. Now, if you come in and it's cold outside, don't go to the normal place we do it at, they will go back to the parlor where it's warm, okay?
Does anyone here know if any of the organizations are interested in doing Easter egg hunt this year for the children of the town? Wasn't done last year? Was it done last year? Oh, the Pioneer Tunnel, did it? Oh, I didn't know that. I know the Nijin and the W, NADI, but I didn't know if that was gonna, I think that's gonna be continued, okay?
Alright, any other public comments? Now we can have a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, second?